We are back, everyone. We're going to begin our briefing or continue our briefing and move into support services.
Okay, that would be me.
That would be you.
So the first thing we have on the list is the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy List, otherwise known as SEDs. And to be quite honest, we've got Kevin Schutte here, who is way more of a master of all things SEDs than I am, so I would defer to him for comments, information, if you're willing to provide that, and if you guys have any questions about that.
Yeah, so just everything that's in the briefing document is, I mean, this is not a first go for anybody other than maybe Travis and Commissioner Tore as well, so I think you all know how to handle the SED list from here.
And this is provided to the EDC board?
Yeah, correct. So as the briefing document says, we solicit projects from all the public agencies. Our board compiles them and then approves them, and then they send them over to you all to run your process.
And one of the purposes of its existence is you can't get certain federal grants and stuff like that unless you're on a SED list. We also have projects within Mason County that we've done that we've made a provision that it also must be on the SED list in order to have gotten funds like from ARPA and stuff like that in the past, right?
Yeah.
All right, so you're requesting that this goes on?
Yes, so we have a resolution to establish the SEDs list for 25 to 26 on here, and just asking to move that forward so that we can get that signed and put it in place.
Next week's meeting.
One question, were there any that didn't make the cut?
Never, no, that's not the process. How do you know that?
Well, take, no, take, yes, if it did happen.
There was consent from, expressed by our board, that the county might remove projects from the SEDs list, and I assured them that the county has never done that, so I would expect that to not be the case again this time.
I agree.
Can't put any like title only SEDs lists on there. Legislature does it all the time.
These are all projects.
Yeah, if we did, we'd actually take their ability to go after certain grants and stuff, so I'm supportive of moving forward.
Move forward for next week. All right, next thing on the agenda is Nicole for requests for on RISC.
Good morning, commissioners. So just to let you all know, the county was recently served with a summons and complaint, and so I'm here to just request approval to move to action for request and defense indemnification for the employees that are named in this suit.
What do you think, should we do that?
Most of them.
Pat, Patsy only.
That's actually actually funny coming from you, so that's.
And.
Pat, Patsy only, right?
And if two of the employees are former employees, but they were employees at the time.
Yeah.
Barely former.
One of them barely.
If anything happened, they'd come after us for them.
I'm supportive of that.
Thank you.
Okay, that was easy, too. All right, next item, apparently things in the IT world need to stay cold, so Kelly's going to talk about that.
I brought TJ over, so in the brand new building, Building 10, we've got a IT server room that is too warm. And it's too warm even with what's in there now, and we got to put double the amount in there. So that being our main hub, we need to keep it cool. So I went out and got some bids, and I'm just asking to move this forward. It's $13,006.27. I talked to Jen, we can do this in REIT, and that's where we're at.
Is there redundancy built into this at all?
The one that is in there will be left there for redundancy. And no, this will be put on the new generator.
Just buy cool computers, I don't understand.
Yeah, so unfortunately, the unit went out on a default, and it got, it got to about 120 degrees in there. It was a roof.
In a couple hours.
And that's when we decided to think, well, what happens if we got twice the amount in there, what is he going to do? So that's why we went forward and moved forward, and that's why we're here.
And I didn't know, I asked TJ if we had some sort of monitoring system in there to know how hot it is in there. Apparently, they make some little dongle that you plug in and actually tells you the heat and warns them.
Yeah, one that does everything these days.
Pretty cool.
Yeah, I've got it on my phone, and we're going to put this on there so me and TJ would have it.
Of course, it's an app on your phone. It's always an app on the phone.
It just goes to where, this is actually Building 8 right now. It's, it is 71 degrees in there. It'll go down to 68, 53% humidity, 63%.
You know, you have a Ring camera that notifies you. Will it notify you if it drops or goes up?
Yeah, and I get emails on it currently from our battery backups, but, you know, middle of night type things, you don't necessarily check your emails, so it'd be nice to have an app to do that.
Seems like a lot of money, but for the thing that it's keep it cool.
Protecting a lot more money.
Yeah, we can't risk it.
I mean, part of the money is just getting it there and getting it on the roof, so we got to hire a crane to get it on the roof. Yep.
I support it.
That's the one.
Are you due to, or are you going to have to put another one in this room because there's a lot of hot air in here?
I know how to run that thing.
She only said that after you guys came in.
Yeah, we'll be leaving soon.
I was going to say, look at her talking about me all morning. All right, moving on to the next one, this is going to go really fast. Jen is here to talk about the jail study, the CDBG grant that we have had out there for a while now.
Yeah, so we just have the closeout for this grant that we received for the period of July 1st, 2023 through, oh, ended on, in 2024, I believe. But anyway, this is just to close out the grant. We ended up getting close to $1 million and only spent $654,000, so we're returning the rest back to Commerce. Are there any questions?
Do we have anything we can ask for them to move back over to S4?
I think that this is the reason it's coming to you so late, is that Mark was trying to do that when he was here and wasn't able to, and so Commerce has been bugging us to close out this grant for, I believe, about six months.
It is what it is. If you don't have it, you don't have it, they won't give it to you. I'm supportive. But I had to ask.
The next thing that I have is the financials for you, so let's share my screen here. Okay, so beginning with current expense revenue, and I know it's a little bit hard to look at on there, we have received through, and this is through June, we've received $24,937,000 in current expense for the general fund compared to June of last year, June 30th of last year, we received $24,289,000. We are at 56% of our budgeted revenue received this year compared to 54% last year, and you can see here the revenue that we projected in 2024 was higher, a little bit higher than this year, the difference being roughly the jail study grant. We had that $1 million in there, so that's the reason for that. Stop me along the way if you have any questions.
So the money that we're returning, that's here in the general fund?
So the budgeted revenue was in there because it was an in and out, so we would expend the funds, receive the funds, and so that was budgeted, but, but not all of it was received, obviously, because not all of it was, was spent, and so.
Okay, so it wasn't received, so we don't, okay.
No, I just.
I'm with you, that's.
Yeah, I just wanted to explain the difference in the higher revenue budgeted in 2024 compared to 2025. Moving on to the treasures revenue detail. In 2025 through June, we've received in the treasurer's office $17,627,000 compared to last year, $16,828,000 roughly. We're at 59% of the budgeted revenue received this year compared to 58% last year. The difference in the increased revenue is just a conglomeration of everything from property taxes to sales tax and a bunch of little items in between. So if there's any questions on that, let me know.
I want to go back just one more for a second. Are we going to have issue on the community development side on the revenue difference, or is that, is that a timing thing?
In talking with Kathy Chazet, she does not believe that there's going to be an issue on that, and, yeah, and that, I mean, Kel can expand on that.
I completely believe her. She says that's good enough for me, after working with all these years.
Yeah. And we did steal her, by the way.
Right.
She starts on Wednesday.
It's so exciting.
Good job, by the way.
Good steal.
Yeah, good steal.
About time we still back.
I think so, too. Okay, on the expenditures for current expense, we have expended through June of this year $25,660,000 compared to last year, $22,787,000. We're at 45% of our budgeted expenditures this year compared to 43% last year, and as I mentioned, every month, a big chunk of the increase is that $650,000 transfer in the transfers out to other funds. You can see that the increase is $720,000 this year compared to about $77,000 last year, so that transfer is the majority of that difference in that, in the transfers department. And then we have in the non-departmental, that roughly $475,000 one-time payment to the RISC pool to bring us to the 15-months payment for, for 2025 to change our annual due date. So this $25,660,000 compared to last year, the increase of about 2.8, can't see where to land, 2.873 million is not as scary as it seems, I don't think, at this point.
And you're looking at the big, at the reasons.
Yeah, I mean, those aren't going to be recurring expenditures, so.
But there's something, a great risk, and we've got a situation where we have, we've had our administrator running off of the budget for the sheriff's department, we have, we had no legislature for a while, we had no, there's a few giant chunks that are not there that will be filling in and still coming in a touch above last year, that's, what would that look like if it had been, you don't actually have to have that, if those positions had been filled and we had filled like that, parks director and stuff, that would be a pretty scary situation. But we didn't, so we're doing good. I'm not saying we're not doing good with it.
Yeah, I mean, if we were fully staffed at any point in time, yeah, we definitely would be hurting more financially, I guess, than what we are, but, I mean, the fact that we accumulated close to $20 million from 2019 to 2023 in the general fund, I mean, we just really needed to start using some of that, and we planned on doing that, and that's what we're doing, and so, yeah, I see what you're saying about being fully staffed, but I.
Not fully, just partially.
Have we ever been fully staffed?
No.
I didn't ask that.
Yeah.
I just wanted somebody to say that now.
I remember, what was it, four years ago, five, no, when Casey came in and announced for the first time ever in his history, remember being here, that he had filled every position, and I think that lasted a month.
Like three weeks.
Yeah, yeah.
It's never come back.
And that's only one department.
Yeah, right.
So, yeah, we will never be fully staffed at any point in time. That's just not going to happen, I don't think, overall, so.
It does, wow.
Yeah, and I.
Monumental.
I mean, other places take that into consideration when they budget. So the way that we budget is very conservative in, in our staffing, we budget like we're going to be fully staffed at all times, and we don't fully fund overtime because of that. But, I mean, there's different ways to budget. I like the way we budget personally because it's easier to, you know, adjust down than it is to go up. We're not legally supposed to go over our budget, and so we, we should always be under our budget, so anyway, I'll stop my rampage. So on the, the next page, the special fund and six-year recap, everything looks pretty good here, nothing super alarming, the trend is generally up on all of our revenues except for lodging tax, which we talked about. There was a big refund, we've talked about that over the last few months, so that's the reason for the dip there. REIT is up, which is great. The county sales tax just continues to go up just a little bit every year. I mean, right now, we're up 3.8% over the last 12 months, so we're projected to receive close to $10 million, maybe a little over $10 million if things continue to go up. We've received about $130,000 more so far this year over last year, so if you look at January through June, these amounts add up to roughly $130,000.
Jennifer, if you can, for the next, next one, if you could provide just an extra sheet to show us so we're, so we're prepared when it does happen. We know that a couple of times a year, it does drop below what we expected, so I'd just like to know maybe last year, when that was. We also deal with transit, and so it just came up on transit's radar as well. It'd be nice if I had some breakdown or historically that.
So, so you're talking about, this is last year, 2024?
Yeah, just sometimes we've gone backwards on our projection. That's, you know, the year before, like this one, what is it you got here in April? We were backwards $21,000, and that happens two or three times every year.
So last year, I have that up now on the screen. So we have only one month where we dipped below the previous year, and that was January of 2024. We were under by about $23,000, but every other month, we were, we showed an increase. And I can email that to you or print it out?
Yeah, if you don't mind, just, just do the same thing with 2023, 22. You know, I like to have three to five years.
Okay. Okay, moving on to the, the six-year financial recap. So at June 30th of 2025, we had $26,301,533 in the bank for the general fund, and you can see all of our reserves showing up above. That is a decrease of close to $3 million over last year that we talked about. You know, not all of that is one, is recurring expenditure, some of it's one-time. We are at 56% of our budgeted revenue, again, through June, and 45% of our budgeted expenditures, and you can see that that, those percentages fit in with the trend for the previous five years. For the cash balances for the special funds, we are at June 30th, $66,631,000, and that is an increase over the previous five years. You can see almost every fund. A lot of the funds are increased from where they were last year. Roads continues to increase, that one's pretty substantial, $16 million.
But one thing to keep in mind, if we move money into roads for economic development, that makes that number stay high. When we move those, it didn't, it never lowers that number, it actually makes it stay there, it just doesn't mean it's not all in line item, is what I'm saying. We know we have about, I mean, almost $6 million of that that we set aside for.
Right, it's all, I mean, the, the fund balance is not spendable unless we have it budgeted, so, so, yeah, I mean, this is just, just looking at cash.
No, I just want to point that out so they knew that it's not, that there's just that much, so we move some to some, a special fund so that we can have it for those other times, so it's kind of obligated without being obligated.
Kind of, I mean, you can choose to obligate it at any point if you want, or whatever. Yeah, I see what you're saying. On ERNR, their fund balance continues to go up as well, so it's not like it's shifting from ERNR to roads, so that, that looks like a very healthy fund balance as well, $6,300,000 roughly. So just something to keep in mind that those fund balances are looking very healthy.
Now, because years ago, we created the support services, don't forget, we separated that out, is every dollar that's in that roads only, or do we, are we keeping some of it for our, our cars and stuff like that, still in ERNR?
So we do not have any of, of the general fund money in there. It's only roads and utilities, and they are doing a lot more outsourcing work to, you know, the fire districts and, I think it's state patrol and other outside entities like that, so.
Just keep track if we needed it, but we can't, years ago, the old commission got in trouble for taking away that fund. That's how we created the support services, was to let them keep what they had in the bank because we had to pay back 3.8 million.
Yeah, yeah.
We let them just keep it in, we end up paying $64,000.
Yeah, I think, I'll take a, a good look at their rates for this year and see what's happening there. I think that, you know, we budget their, their sal, so part of it, I think, is we budget their, their salaries in there in full, just like we do the general fund, they end up coming back in lower, but we should be accounting for that in the, in the rate, that difference, so I can't imagine that they're doing that much outside work that it's increasing their fund that much, so, yeah, I'll take a good look and see why it's increasing at the rate that it does.
The rates are, pattern always a year or more backwards. That's how we set it up to make sure that it's covered. Thank you.
On the motor pool summary, we're at 38.66% of our budgeted expenditures. We budgeted 2.1 million, and so far through June, we've spent $812,000. I think there's roughly seven cars that we're waiting on right now to be outfitted, so we'll, you know, we're starting to spend some of that outfit money, which is a big majority of the, of the budget. So we'll keep an eye on that and make sure we have enough budgeted there. I think that we do, but anyway, something to keep an eye on since the cars are starting to roll in. On the special fund revenue, so far through, through June, we have received $26,377,000 compared to last year, $32,630,000. We're at 47% of our revenue, budgeted revenue this year compared to 51% last year. On the expenditures, we have expended for the special funds through June, $23,592,000 compared to last year, $23,713,000, and we're at 33% of our budget this year compared to 32% last year. For county debt through June, we have $15,821,000 outstanding. And that's all I've got, if you, unless you have any questions.
The, if you go back to the, the special funds revenue, why the drop from 51% to 47?
Because the special funds are not like the general fund where they have roughly the same, same expenditures, recurring expenditures every year. I mean, they, they vary, they fluctuate a lot in their projects and what they're doing, so it's not really fair to compare one year to the next for the special funds, to be honest.
And we may sometimes save up money to do a big giant project, which will have a bigger effect in that year.
Or it's not really fair to, to compare them and expect the same from year to year, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. Any other questions on that? Or anything?
We're getting low on that trial court improvement.
Trial court improvement, I think, is okay because that's, there's no salaries in there.
Yeah.
That are budgeted. That's money from district court for the judges' benefits, I think it is, that come from the state. So we transfer that into the trial court improvement, and that's used for all the courts for their different equipment, and we used a lot of that for the Building 10 needs, and so I'm not worried about it getting, you know, there's no recurring expenditures in there. Law Library is one where I'm more worried about, their fund balance, since they do have salaries in there. I think they will probably be okay for this year, but for next year, I'm, I'm very worried about.
Do you have an idea, a recommendation, what to do for next year, or?
I'm thinking, I mean, we might want to look at either doing a transfer from the general fund into Law Library, budgeting that in case we need it. That might be the best thing to do. The other option would be to take that, it's roughly 6% of a FTE, and budget that in the general fund, so either one of those would be sufficient options.
But if we did that, then we'd have to increase it on the court side then, right?
Right.
So we'll remember that.
Any other questions or comments on that? Thank you, that's all I have.
Let's stop sharing.
And I think that wraps it up for us, Commissioner.
Set for.
I got something I want to bring up for the commission to consider and stuff. We've, we've had all these fires and everything like that, and we all know, we're all big fans of all those heroes and stuff. I had a citizen call and ask me, I'm going to make some phone calls for the local signs. What do you think about us putting out on the highway a few of our county signs that just thank them?
I think they might be in use right now, aren't they, directing people, telling people that the roads are closed?
That's DOT equipment.
Is it DOT?
Yeah.
Yeah, but I, I would have to circle back with Lauren, and she was saying that most of them were used up on road projects and stuff right now for, for some of the projects they're doing around the county, so I don't know if we have one, one or two available, but certainly.
We only need a couple if they have them available, just drop them on the road and just say thank you, because as was pointed out, they actually go past them, get to it every day, and, and this is a firefighter that was telling me, an old fourth, he says they, when they see that, they just bust buttons, they feel so proud that the community paid attention, so.
I do have the one available that I had to supply here by Mason County. But I have to have a outlet, if I get to do it, but I can surely put it in our courthouse lawn, or, or I did something.
Well, I'll see if we can get you one on the highway, because like for Tunaville Fire, it'd be nice, what was that, I think Brian Peterson owns that front park, maybe we can get him to let you put it out there. There's Henningsons just past that where they actually have a big sign.
Yeah, that would be the key, we need to put it on private property because the processing going through and trying to put it on UOT property.
That's what I'm thinking, just, just. That's what I'm thinking, just, just. If you guys, if you guys are okay with it, I'll start working on that a little bit to find locations for two. If we can get the second one, yeah.
I definitely have one.
Okay, you have one, and maybe you can look, see if we can find a second one, and then I'll also work on some of the businesses. He was right. When he called, he was right.
What about P U D? Because I thought they were about to have a science too.
Well, that's, you'll, you'll, she'll take care of that one.
And Kelly, do you want to circle back to the red and see if we have another one for?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I think the one I have is actually, yeah, Sheriff's Office.
I'll do three, you do one.
It's because we're all loaning them to each other, and that's the way it should be. So that's the link, we just gotta drive them down.
And even if it's just there for a few days or a week, that's huge for these people that are doing it. And for anybody that's watching the meetings, we got to clarify something. I get so many phone calls and stuff from people that think because it's zero contained or five percent contained, that they're not doing their job. Containment in the fire business is completely different than containment in your, my home. It doesn't mean that that's how much control they have of the fire. That means that's how much they have absolutely cordoned off completely. So even if they were going around a circle and they hadn't finished the circle with a, with structure or, or fire breaks, it's not contained till they complete the circle. They actually have to. That's what containment is. So the truth, the thing is, though, the fire isn't spreading, so in our terminology of containment, they're great, you know? That's up in Tunaville, eighty-five acres has stayed at eighty-five acres. To me, that's contained, but to them, it's not. So bear that in mind when they read these things, because people, I had somebody actually post that, what do you mean calling them heroes? They're zeros. Blah blah, you kidding me? I wanted to beat them up.
Are we not a good idea?
No, not a good idea. That'd be in the paper. I do visit them.
Okay.
Okay.
That was good for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, the next packet was the Angela Avery law contract.
I looked at it just now. I read it a little bit.
Okay. Yeah, there's something that I think that we need to really take a look at, discuss where we want to go with.
I think it's us, isn't it?
Probably something that we should consider. We can work with Kim, with Kim.
Yeah, and we've got draft, like agreements, we can just fill that scope of, that proposed scope of work in as the scope on an attachment and then have just a standard service agreement contract. I mean, that seems pretty simple.
I know myself, I'm not a fan of it, but at the same time, it is what it is, what it is, what it is. And I know that we've empowered you to go forward with doing, so I'll be going more off of your recommendation. That's how I always do it. So you're the one in the middle of that, of that fire, so you tell us what you think.
Right now Maggie does the bulk of it, but there's certain things that she can't do because she's non-attending.
And can we look to increase that status on that?
We're looking at that as well, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I think Kim's looking on the reclass.
Yep. And are you looking to circle back next week to talk about the contract?
Let's do, yeah.
Okay, because it's in here, but it wasn't on a briefing document or anything.
Yeah, yeah. No, let's do, bring it back and have, well, Kim in the room as well.
And maybe you'd be ready for a recommendation or a vote?
Similar subject, the extension of the fifty dollars now, extra for contract public defenders that expires
Right.
in August. So we may need to, we're gonna have to do something about it.
Yeah, we are, for sure.
That's gonna, I mean, that's coming up fast.
Right.
I think we should, for safety wise, even up a little bit more than, but it'd be nice if we had a recommendation that we can go off of. I'm just saying, I'm open to it.
Maggie said the fifty bucks was, was working. And so if we.
At least extend, extend the time.
Yeah.
Because it's, it's coming up to be a deadline. We cut that out, it's like all of a sudden.
Did you bring that extension, how many months do you think, Commissioner? Three months?
We take it to the end of the year.
End of the year, okay. I'm supportive of that.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. I just, I see that coming as a freight train and we got it.
That's good, so it is a freight train. You're right. I'm glad you caught that, because I, that fell off my radar completely.
And that's the per hour for the defense.
Yeah.
For contract defense, public defense.
Yeah.
Yep, we can throw that in a briefing, bring it just next week, so.
That works.
Who are you guys? Morning. So about a month ago or so, a month and a half ago, I announced or made a statement about a grant that we're getting from Waspick. And it was for roughly three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred and four point one six dollars. That's roughly speaking. We'd asked for about four hundred and four thousand, or four hundred, I'm sorry, four hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. So we didn't get it all, but we got a, a big chunk of it. We're kind of need another thirty-eight thousand for the two-year period, not for each year. We're looking at fifty-four hundred dollars the first year and about thirty-two thousand, five hundred and seventy-one point six eight for the second year. We believe that that qualifies for T S T funding. Furthermore, we've been working with Melissa at Public Health to work with ORS to develop the contract that's going to use and consume this money. That's about it.
So you're asking for it out of the, out of the treatment sales tax, or you're asking for it out of the?
T S T funds.
T S T, okay.
Because currently, it's already coming out of T S T funds for the existing co, co-responders. And what we're gonna do is ORS is gonna expand their existing contract to absorb this, so it's just a little cleaner, one, one process. And Jen and Melissa have been working on it to get the language straight, and Tenessa was fantastic in getting this three hundred and eighty thousand.
So you'll have a force for the next meeting?
Yeah, so this request is going to the Housing and Behavioral Health Board. They have a meeting at the end of the month, but we're thinking that it fits into the one-time use. It's like bullet number nine of resolution, whatever, twenty-twenty-one, that's whatever it was. For, yeah, the one-time use of T S T funds, since it's not a recurring expense. So it doesn't have to fit into that formula of sixty-five percent to the offices of the county. So anyway, so yeah, we were requesting that, but Melissa thinks, I think she thought it was a small enough amount that we could just, you know, get it, get it approved prior to it going to the board, I think is what she was saying.
Within their budget, just absorb it and stuff like that?
Yeah.
That doesn't bother me, that's.
Pocket change for that fund, yeah.
If it doesn't put them lucky rich in, in your stuff, then.
No, I mean, it, it might need to go to a budget amendment, but we could do that, you know, in, in the second part of the year. Because the, the people wouldn't start until October, billing wouldn't start until, you know, at least November. So, so yeah, we're just trying to figure out the whole, the whole process and where it fits in.
Besides that, they don't use all of it. Tell them, you know, we're good. This is, in the old days, when they first come in, they come in every month, every two weeks for a budget amendment.
Yeah.
So they've learned to live within their means and, and as long as we don't let them go over their budget, we got time. So I'm comfortable having you want to bring that forward for me.
Okay, great.
This is a great service to do, look at their track record.
Oh, yeah.
They're, they're critical.
They've been a big help to us.
Yeah.
So I guess the second topic is, it's, it's come up, and I'm not sure if the sheriff had talked to you guys independently. He was trying to hold you guys to have a chat with you about jail housing and disqualified housing and stuff. Did he, no, okay. I know he's been busy with family, so.
I'm up on most of those. If you tell me what the need is going on up with this.
Sure. So we had a situation, well, a couple situations in the last month or so where our population spiked. We've gone over, we had like sixty-eight people in jail one day, and we've been trying to manage the jail population from sixty with the staff. And we still have eight vacancies over there. So we made the call one weekend to ship some more people to disqualified temporarily instead of going on booking restrictions. So we've been running like two inmates over at disqualified the last couple months, so it's been pretty minimal. But we did bump it up to, there was eight in there, I think, this last, this last weekend, so.
But that's just for that moment, though, right?
You're still, does that affect the average? It will affect the average, yeah, because it's not like you just sit in there one day and then we bring back the next. It's, it'll probably be there for a week or a couple of weeks at a time. It just depends on the population. Like today, we're at sixty-one, which sixty is our, kind of our cap. And so we didn't send that one to disqualified. We'd just been hoping the courts would release people and kind of get them out, you know? But it just, it just ebbs and flows. And I know, you know, early la-, late last year, we had conversations about the disqualified contract and the, the funding for it. And then we also talked about booking restrictions, and we talked about what the board's desires are as far as booking restrictions versus funding. Do we, are we willing to pay for the extra people at disqualified to, to kind of bypass the booking restrictions and still allow those people who get arrested in our community to come to jail, the minor crimes? Or do we, you know, work, I guess we were, we wanted to have a conversation with you guys to figure out, you know, collaboratively, what we want to do. If this is gonna be the trend for the next six months, and we're gonna have to start putting people in disqualified again, you know, what, what are your guys' thoughts or your desires, or what are your, we just want to work with you guys to try to come up with a common plan. Because I don't think booking restrictions are good for anybody, honestly. You know, we want people that commit crimes in our county to come to jail, so. But with that comes an expense.
So you're saying, so monthly cost per prisoner is forty-two ninety?
Correct. For one.
For one, right. Right. So are you saying the judges aren't releasing people?
Well, I don't know if it's not necessarily the judges aren't releasing people, but it seems like we lately have had people that have committed crimes that are at the more serious level. And, you know, I mean, the detectives, the law enforcement, what do you do? I mean, it's, you know, we're still housing city prisoners, we're still housing D O C.
Does the city taking people to disqualified as well?
Correct.
How many are you holding in disqualified at times right now?
There is eight there today. There has been only two there for the last two months. And the only reason I didn't have June, and they're saying I haven't got them till yet.
Because I do have an opinion on it. I thought, when we gave, set this up, it was under dire situation.
Right.
Later on, we also reestablished it because we also knew we needed to keep an ongoing. I know myself, in my mind, I had a vision of five on a regular basis, funding wise. So that's, I'm still there. I think, you know, I always believed we can do some more to house some of them locally, you know, how I feel about that. But I've, I always expected you would keep that contract and we'd utilize it for, you know, that average. In my mind, when I was thinking money, so anything less than that is the wind. Anything about that is something to talk about. But I don't even see a, a bump if it's.
Five-ish?
Yeah. So that, that means eight today, but you know, there's other times where, and I understand.
Two.
Yeah, and I understand that, so that, that's where I was when we did it. I'm still there unless you think we need to have a deeper discussion.
Good.
I totally agree. We can't just let people not go to jail when they're committing crimes. So that's part of our responsibility is protect citizens.
So then, listening to you guys, it does mean that we would have to institute some sort of booking restrictions at some certain level, right? If you're saying five here and we're already at sixty or sixty-one, do we continue?
Well, I think, I think it's a combination of the both.
Okay.
Personally, because I think, I've always, this is nothing different than I've always been at when it comes to capacity. We've known that, but I'm still in the same. I do recognize where you're coming from. But maybe there's times where we bring it up a little bit inside with the idea that we'll, we'll, you know, move them out if we have to. But I don't want you to turn people away, but at the same time, I just don't want to do it, we know, I want more pressure on to, to house them. But continue to keep using that contract.
Okay.
And you realize that we're paying for this out of wage and benefits?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
And I'm just harassing that judge, because he's in the way.
I didn't even see anybody back there.
How could you listen?
Well, you didn't say anything. I was hiding behind you.
Wow. So under sheriff, just so you know, one of the things about me, you are, right? Okay, acting under sheriff, one of the things about me, when I do the budgets and stuff in my head and stuff, I do, I never see the money that is coming back as being part of something that's just expendable. That's actually considered when we do the budget, that we're gonna have unexpendated budgets or if it comes back. So it doesn't just belong in one department. It's part of the whole pie, that, how I look at it. So just to let you know, that's.
No, I understand that, and that's kind of why I'm having this con-, we're having the conversation, is because we're going to be consuming that, those funds, and that's.
But you're well within. You, you guys have done a great job, and you're well within.
Okay.
Your budgets, I'm not, I'm not worried about your budgets. Remember, I've been around when I had to worry about it every day. That's not what it's like these days. I won't shut it.
I'll, you know, I'll keep that updated, the spreadsheet that was attached to the briefing. And I'll just, so you guys can look at it every month and, you know, kind of get a feel where we're at and how much money we're spending and what our population is.
It's kind of fun looking at the, the October, November, and December of twenty-three, twenty-four. Of course, you're not there yet, but you can see kind of trends, so.
Yeah.
Well, that's just it, you know, I mean, our cap, our county population went doubles in the summertime. So, you know, do the, do the calculations with crime. It'll probably be the same.
But remember, you got all those months that it's two on average and stuff, I expected, like I said, originally, I always thought five in my head. It doesn't mean if there was, if it averaged out six, that I'd be upset. That's not what I'm saying. I'm just saying, I knew that's what I was agreeing to when I agreed to it.
Okay.
Twenty-eight to September.
Yeah, the fall is pretty busy, yeah, for sure.
But, you know.
I disagree. I'm, I'm not in favor of booking restrictions at all.
Okay.
Well, if we start to change, we'll do what we have to do and come back and talk to you more. Okay, thank you. Anything.
Appreciate it.
Cool, thank you.
How'd you grow in this thing?
In case I haven't said.
We just, we have, maybe, I don't know, how many reasons we do it in the last two weeks, five, six, seven. And we can't give anybody a passive background.
I don't know if you want to hear something cool. I haven't had, nobody calling me all pissed off and stuff for a long time now.
Well, good.
You know, I'm talking about staff and stuff, not at all. Not even a peep.
Well, that's good work.
That's great work. That's why I'm calling right now. Thank you.
All right. I think we've got Melissa on the line.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, she's on vacation.
She is. Good morning, Commissioners. Can you hear me okay? Yeah.
Thank you. I appreciate it once again for you accommodating me, being able to do this briefing remotely. It is very time sensitive, so I'll go ahead and just jump in. As you know, our consolidated homeless grant with the Department of Commerce was not received by the effective June, July first. So we are delayed in getting all contracts for the fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven biennium executed with our subcontractors. So there has not been a new contract executed for the Housing and Essential Needs Program. That was a program that was previously provided by Community Action Council of Lewis, Mason, and Thurston Counties. And that has resulted in a pretty significant gap in service. Last week, Public Health received a very high volume of calls throughout the week from clients who were behind on their rent or had late fees. There's currently a hundred and two active clients from the Community Action Council caseload who are impacted by this gap in service, and that doesn't include new clients who are also eligible and are unable to receive services at this time. So we'd like to do a one-month, a very short-term amendment with Community Action Council just for the month of July while we work on executing the full fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven contracts with the new providers. This will allow for Community Action Council to continue to work with the clients so that there continues to be no gaps in services. People will be served, no one will be behind on their rent, and of course, they wouldn't be accruing additional late fees. So I'm asking for this to move forward to the June twenty, or sorry, the July twenty-second action agenda for approval. And then just as a quick update for you, we did finally receive the contract with Commerce to review last Friday. So I am working very quickly to get that ready for briefing next Monday.
Melissa, when we spoke on Friday, we talked about potentially making it two months instead of one. Just to be clear, this is not additional money. It's gonna come off of the grant.
That's hand money.
It's, it's coming off the grant that going forward, it's gonna reduce. It's, it's coming off the grant that going forward, it's gonna reduce the, or reduce the grant from the new grantee.
Are, are you, is that what your proposal is, the two months?
She said one.
I, I heard that, that's why I'm, but.
What was it? The draft amendment that was in, attached to the briefing was for one month. Um, however, two months would allow a little bit more flexibility in case there are any further delays in contracting for the new year.
Okay, I have no issue with, uh, Commissioner Trask. You know how I feel about the situation and the stuff that came around, and that's what we're talking about here. You need to say what?
Well, my, my first concern is the clients. We don't, I don't want anybody being kicked out and preached on the street. So, um, I would, I would support the two months just because of the timing. I, I was so concerned that the contract from Commerce wasn't going to get us, get to us in time. And it sounds like you barely got it on Friday, which is how, how many weeks too late?
Uh, three. Wait, two and a half, two?
Yeah, yes. So I, I'd really like to encourage Commerce to do their job.
Right when you build.
And provide, so that we can provide services to the people that we're required to provide services to. So two months would be fine with me.
That was my reaction was, let's not be in this emergency state again.
Again.
Sounds like you have three for two months.
Okay, perfect. I will update the amendment, um, in time for the action agenda in one second.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Not yet.
Okay. You know where to find me.
Have fun.
Well, enjoy your vacation.
Thank you. Appreciate the flexibility. Thank you, commissioners.
Thanks for the call on Friday and getting this discussed before you went on your vacation. So appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Melissa.
Well.
Mine's boring, I guess.
Yours is boring?
This is our, this is our.
Check you out.
I know.
You look younger, a lot younger.
Kind of like sandpaper feet. My, uh, this, this is a grant for local solid waste finance, financial assistance program. This is a grant that we get every two years from the Department of Ecology. And, uh, Public Health also gets a grant like this, but, um, environmental health uses this for solid waste code enforcement work. So this funds about three-quarters of an FTE. Um, it's actually probably a little less than that now. But, uh, it's, uh, it's a grant we get every year and it's a seventy-five, twenty-five, so we have a twenty-five percent match. And our contribution is, uh, forty-three thousand, eight thirty-eight. Um, that comes from our solid waste tipping fees.
What does this employee do?
This employee does, uh, solid waste code enforcement complaint cases, complaint investigations, um, also inspections of solid waste facilities like, um, wrecking yards and composting facilities and other solid waste facilities that are like businesses.
So, uh, I'm supportive, but I, I'm only speaking for myself about the other commissioners. We had a situation here where the commission just stepped forward and said, we want this. I would expect that soon we may have that conversation when it comes to enforcement and getting some of these places cleaned up. So I'd like to ask you to have a talk with them and see about what they can do to go out and start to show action immediately for us. I'd rather see it that way than us sit here and put something forward. So please consider that.
Can you clarify that?
Enforcement, enforcement action on some of the ones that we've definitely contacted you guys about and had conversations. And I know we always try to find a way to find the nicer answers, but sometimes things have to, to change. Again, I'd rather see it happen from your end instead of happening from our commissioner end, but I think something has to happen really soon because I think there's gonna be some deep conversations.
Yeah, well, that's.
And again, I'm speaking for myself. I'm not putting any pressure on.
I totally get that. And that's why I've continually brought up the code enforcement issue with this group of, to discuss what our needs are to be able to affect those actions, so.
I do know that some of them are already in, they've gone over to the prosecutor's office and you guys are working.
Yeah.
To, um, because there's a process. And so I know you're working on those. Appreciate that a lot.
Uh, the other thing I'm following up on, you had, at our last meeting, you had requested information about whether we could hire a, uh, hearing examiner. So I have done some research as far as other counties and other jurisdictions go. But the main piece I was waiting for is to be able to speak with our, um, our new HR director. Because that's part of, you know, figuring out what a position like that would entail, so. That's the piece I'm waiting on.
Well, I appreciate you continuing the conversation. I look forward to hearing that. No problem not having it today, that's for sure.
All right. Other.
I support this.
I support it as long as we can start doing more enforcement because that's, that's the biggest complaint.
Yeah, I mean, we were, we were maxed out. This contract was all we had for many years. And now we supplement this with, um, Foundation Public Health Services funding. And we've made a lot of progress, but I totally get the, um, citizen complaints about, uh, the rate at which code enforcement happens.
Well, there's, there's an old saying in sales, a great salesman is a person that finds a new way to sell an old product, just in a different way. I'd like for you to consider that with maybe how to handle this. It may be time to re-rack and look at different ways and different options on how to handle it instead of the same path that we've always done. Sometimes doing the same thing over and over again isn't the, the best. I have no recommendation for you. I'm just throwing that out there. I go for that conversation, please.
Sure.
Let's look at some of the other grants too that are over in Public Health to see if there's any others that we can tap into. Because I know that you guys get a ton of grants, and so let's take a look at those. And see, see what's available out there too.
Okay.
Can you send us, it's not the bait, but what is it? Where was that one? We have three hundred and eleven thousand somewhere in here for.
On which one?
Is that the community development abatement fund?
Revenue fund you said, huh?
Is it the community development abatement fund you're talking about?
Yes, I, that might be what it is. I, when I was just checking, they had three hundred and eleven thousand in it. Can you look and have somebody send me, uh, it might be, just send me what, what the actual, uh, uses, the, the, the RCW or WAC, whatever we're utilizing for spending those funds. If somebody could just send me a copy of that so I could just read for myself, please.
You could share that with all three of that with the group. Yeah, I support bringing this one.
Okay. All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's the abatement repair demolition fund. So that may not be there. That may be yours.
I don't have a fund. I have no fund.
It's DCDs.
That is DCDs? Okay, thank you.
Hey, Callie, you're up.
Ian has no fund.
So did you guys plan on coordinating?
Yep.
Yeah, well done.
Thanks. Morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
You just didn't know it was supposed to be a sweater?
Yeah, I didn't read the whole message. It's part of it.
It's like eighty-five degrees out there.
But in here.
That's almost seventy-five.
Cold front.
Pretty yesterday.
Yeah.
All right, quarterly updates. Um, the last quarter, we did a pretty big dog and pony show. So this month, we are going to just provide you some updates and then available for any questions that you have. Our numbers overall for permit, uh, permit numbers for the year are down comparative to other years. But, um, that's to be expected given our economy. We're not concerned about it as far as our budget goes. We have some unfilled positions that we just don't plan on filling right now. Uh, and then we also have an opportunity with the city possibly at the end of the year, beginning of next year for the Lennar project. Um, so we're counting on, we're not counting on that, but we are looking forward to that opportunity. And, um, let's see, uh, so that's it for the numbers. Our permit turnaround times are hovering around thirty days. Um, that of course is, uh, completely due to our, uh, efficiency and nothing to do with down numbers or anything.
Well said.
Um, on SmartGov, we're continuing to improve that. We, we're down one planner for a bit. Uh, and so we had Julie kind of hold off on, um, you know, progress improvements on that and really just kind of monitoring day-to-day emergencies or what have you. But now that we've got that, uh, planner on board and she's already jumping into things, uh, Julie will be able to move back into doing the SmartGov improvements. Um, I don't know if we mentioned last quarter, but we do have, um, single-family, uh, residential permits available online. So, and people are utilizing that.
Yeah, I believe March first, we will lie with those. I think I shared some of those numbers last time, and I have some others where, which will be, I think, kind of a lightning on the use of that, uh, service, so.
Yeah, so that's, that's pretty exciting. Um, uh, then on scanning, we did lose a scanner to the sheriff's office. So she went over there. We're not gonna fill that position. The scanner we have is doing an excellent job. And, um, now that those ARPA funds were moved over, um, you know, we'll just utilize, uh, you know, she's, she's doing great on her own. And so we'll, we're just plugging away at that. And that's it. I'm gonna turn it over to Josh because he has a lot of more numbers.
I wanna give you a compliment and say thank you for something. I was asking about your numbers earlier and Stefan was told that most likely it's nothing to worry about, and now I can see why. Because you're proactive on thinking about your budgets as it's coming in and you're watching what you're hiring to do it. And that would make up for the difference that I'm, I am seeing in that. And so I, somebody needed to say thank you for that because that's how we keep out of trouble. Well done.
Agreed.
Well, a few years ago, uh, former Commissioner Kevin Shute talked to me about, um, staffing. And because back from the two thousand eight days and we'd let go so many people and then as the economy slowly started coming back up, it took, it was hard to get people back on staff and everything quickly. And so this time, we've decided to, um, you know, to be really careful about when we lose a position. Do we really need to fill it at that time? How are, how are our numbers? What does that look like? And, and then, um, you know, as long as we can continue, uh, to have them budgeted full-time, keep that in there. So then as we see an economy come back, we can immediately fill without having to, you know, to go through that process, so.
I have no problem budgeting that way. I see, see, that's why I say I asked that question earlier. Now I, I didn't understand it, but when Kathy says, uh.
Yeah, and then Kathy is also a great resource on the numbers. I'm like, do we need to fill this position or do we want to leave it open? Yeah.
To hear that, and I was comfortable.
Yeah.
Now I know why.
We'll miss her for the record.
I know.
Yeah, that's coming up next.
Great, great resource.
Yes.
Not for us.
She's still with us. So I'll go into some details here, uh, in regards to kind of breaking down each department and kind of some numbers just to shed some light on, on where we're at with that. So first, I'll start off with, uh, the building and planning and co- enforcement team, excuse me. Uh, so since the last quarter, um, so pretty much since April fifteenth to today, um, forty-three new cases have been opened. Uh, roughly fifteen in the planning, uh, discipline, uh, seventeen in the building discipline, and then about eleven combined because sometimes there's a lot of crossover in those two, uh, so they work well together. Um, and so they've been gangbusters since that, over the year or since the year began, we've opened ninety cases, um, with about forty of those closed. Um, sometimes they are easier to close than others, so sometimes we get some lag in there. Uh, but with having kind of that team together, I'm definitely seeing some movement, uh, along with just those enforcement cases being open and addressed. And again, these are just related to, uh, planning, uh, enforcement cases. So that's, you know, developing in shoreline, um, things along those lines. Building, uh, elements or occupying structures that weren't approved for occup- occupation or, uh, dwellings. We have a big kind of push on garage conversions to dwellings and/or a lot of, uh, short-term rentals, especially at this time of year, where they want to get more space, more money, more individuals in. So I know our enforcement teams have been working a lot with those, uh, to get those kind of rectified, um, mainly for the safety of the public as well. So, um, that's kind of where we are with the enforcement numbers. Any questions about those?
Something that, curious about the, the garage conversions.
Yes, so that's, I, I, a lot of it's, it's kind of a mixed bag in regards to people having SDRs, short-term rentals, and just want more space to make it more equitable. Uh, and then also we have the other side of the coin where people don't really have other means. And so it's kind of forcing their hands in regards to putting the roof over their head and so on. So it's a mixed bag of, of kind of where they're coming from. But, uh, we've seen a big push on that of conversion of structures in, into dwellings out of whether storage shed or garages or other elements like that, so.
Really?
Yes.
Sorry, are, are they using them as ADUs?
Um, you could count it as that, yes. Um, just based on they're separate from the main dwelling usually. Uh, some of the instances, mainly the short-term rentals that are attached to the dwelling. So you can just be kind of conceived as an addition to the, uh, living space. Uh, but yes, some of those are considered ADUs or could be considered ADUs if they went through kind of the approval process. Which we're trying to walk them down that path by all means to, to make it correct. Uh, or, you know, sh- share the bad news with them if it's not. So, uh, we, we definitely want to work with everybody to make sure everyone is given a fair shake and understand the rules. So it's kind of a tough place to be at times.
Be curious to see if there's any issues that, that we can ask our legislators to either make it easier for people to get the permits.
Okay, and I think ADUs, and not to interrupt, have been a lot easier to obtain over the last few years. So, um, it's more just the process and then the means. Obviously, there's, you know, water, um, rights or, you know, availability is a struggle. Uh, septic sizing or, you know, dealing with that in one way or another is also a challenge because, you know, usually they're at their limit for their capacity. So adding that extra bedroom and so on is tough and/or costs quite a bit to upgrade that system. So, um, it's more of a financial kind of burden, let alone the kind of red tape, if that makes sense. Because ADUs have been made easier to obtain over the years.
Yeah, we've, we've done a lot of work on, um, making ADUs more accessible, um, permit-wise. So we've, you know, we used to take them to the hearing examiner at a, it was a reduced hearing examiner fee, but still it's just the, it still added additional fee plus the additional time. Now we do it administratively. We've increased the allowed size from a thousand square feet to twelve hundred square feet. We've also, um, allowed that if you're, you have an existing residence and then you're gonna build another main residence, we'll allow that existing residence, I think it's up to fourteen hundred square feet?
Yes.
Or fifteen hundred square feet to be used as your ADU. So you don't have, you know, like, say a house that was built in the seventies. Now you want, you know, something, so it's, so we're trying to be as flexible as possible. Um, it's almost like the legislature is catching up with what we've already been doing and we were never challenged in prior years for that. So now, so, um, but, but now it comes down to, A, on the short-term rentals, folks are just trying to maximize their own profit dollars. Um, and maybe either not knowing or avoiding permit fees, maybe because of the water connection issues or septic. And then on the other hand, is the, the folks that just regardless of the permitting, they, they can't, maybe not afford to either do it per code or I, you know, it's a variety of issues there.
So I, I asked, um, Dave to probably meet with you guys and Travis and talk about the septics. So the, the ones that are, that you, they pump out.
With holy tanks, that sort of stuff?
Right, right. So if you could reach out to him and see if you can further that conversation along, that would be great.
Okay.
I didn't.
No, no, I would have forgotten, so I'd write down. Uh, so that's kind of covering the enforcement. So next, I'm gonna roll into building inspections. Uh, so weekly, we have, um, an average availability of twenty-five inspections per day, uh, making that a hundred and twenty-five per week and five hundred, uh, per month. Um, those fluctuate depending on staff availability, um, you know, sick time, vacation, along with holidays and also maybe other needs of department. If we need to kind of keep people in more to focus on planning review to kind of keep those numbers reasonable. Uh, so those numbers are always fluctuating, uh, depending on kind of the need and of the department and also the public. Uh, currently, some bigger projects we have going on, uh, that T-hanger there at the airport, we just finalized that last week. Um, there's still another big twenty-nine thousand square foot fabrication building that's, um, being built or going to be built at the port as well. Um, I believe they're out for bid right now on that one, so I don't have a timeline of exactly when that'll start. But that'll be a good fun project, uh, for the department. Um, let's see, phase two of the Belfair Apartments is still underway. I would say they're probably about seventy-five percent done with that roughly. Um, just a lot of kind of finished work. Uh, and, uh, they have a smaller building that they just started building, I'd say about three months ago. Um, but after all that's said and done, that'll be wrapped up in quite a few available apartments and so on for that area of the community in general. Uh, a lot of PUD projects still underway, a combination of both power infrastructure upgrades along with water upgrades as well, so.
So apart, those apartments over there, are they, there was, they were going to build over by the post office in that area? Are they going to do that?
That's the one. That's the one they started about three months ago, building L. So, yeah, that one is underway currently. I think they have it erected right now, and starting to do interior stuff. So, yes. So, they, they decided to go with that one. I know there's talks back and forth of making it a parking lot, making it a storage unit, or space, and they just stuck with the original plan. So, yeah. It is, yeah. And so, I think they're also kind of in communication with the Navy and that sort of stuff, to kind of get their name out there, and hopefully maybe fill those. So, but yeah, they moved forward with that, which was good on our side too, because more projects, the better, especially housing, so.
Right.
Up in Belfair, we also have the grocery outlet, change and tenant. That was in the old Rite Aid that's underway. I believe they're close to being done. Edward Jones as well up in Belfair, I believe they just got occupancy. We have the Hootsport Ace Hardware that is completed as well. And that Sunrise Hotel in Hootsport is also well underway. If you haven't been up there yet, it's right on the road. It's hard to miss.
It's amazing.
Yes. And then various projects with DOC, Department of Corrections, that we've been working with as well. On plan review, we, as Cal was saying, we are floating around that thirty-day turnaround time, which is great. And as she mentioned, we have a good portion of our permits available online. So, for instance, for manufactured home, this last quarter, again, from April fifteenth to July fourteenth, in-person cementals for manufactured homes, we had eleven total, while online, we had twenty-seven. So, significant difference. And I think last time we talked, it was roughly fifty-fifty. So, we can definitely see the public is kind of catching on to that online process, which is nice. Single-family residents, again, we went live on March 1st. So, I think the numbers were very small, just based on the, the sample size. But this quarter, let's see, in-person, we had twenty-four, with online twenty-five. So, again, increased, or majority are online. And same things with garage cementals, sixteen in-person with twenty online. So, again, the online cemental is really catching on and starting to dominate the in-person. So, with that being said, we still have a lot of people coming through our door, but we're able to facilitate those because there are more kind of questions, and, and that sort of stuff, rather than the intake process. So, again, I think we're serving the, the public better in regards to having that availability, to kind of answer questions, along with processing their permits kind of in the background. So, any questions about that? Awesome. Yes. Another duty we do as well is pre-application meetings. That's an opportunity for building, planning, environmental health, public works, PUD, and any other kind of stakeholder, to get in a room with potential developers to go over requirements and processes. So, year-to-date, we've done thirty of those meetings with this last quarter, thirteen total. So, again, the more we have of those, the more potential growth and projects come through the door. So, always encourage to see what people have ideas for, where those are located, and so on. So, again, thirty to, year-to-date, and thirteen last quarter. And then, last but not least, our fire marshal, a very busy man, especially with all the fires and stuff going on too. And as you guys are well aware, the burn ban in place. But again, this last quarter, he's processed nineteen total development permits, everything from fire alarms, sprinklers, and hoods, along with thirteen burn permits as well, which obviously burn permits are placed on hold right now due to the restrictions. But, but yeah, those are the numbers on his end too. So, and that's kind of all I have for the numbers.
The numbers are good.
The numbers, yeah. So, yeah, any questions?
Have you started, I started, are you using often the idea of video inspection for a lot of these?
We do some of those mechanically, for mechanical inspections, heat pumps, and so on. We're trying to maybe expand that a little more. However, we still need half our staff availability to do so. So, either they're in the field, kind of incorporating that in their routes, and/or they're taking the time to do that at their desk. So, we haven't dove in with both feet on that, but we do facilitate some to help alleviate some of the field time and so on, especially the ones that are feasible. Some of them are not, just depending on, you know, service is number one. You know, we have some, you know, blackout areas in a sense, just based on that, along with, some inspections are hard to get a full picture of all that, because you're really just seeing it through the lens, right? So, we do re-inspects that way, whether that be via photo or video, because the inspector had, already has kind of an idea of what they're looking for, what the site looks like. So, it's, again, a little easier to facilitate those, but some...
Well, I haven't gotten your calls recently, but one of the biggest issues was like, when they had to do a pour, and they had the contractors coming out, and they couldn't get anybody to just measure to make sure it was six inches deep.
Yeah.
Those are the things I'm more worried about. But I have calls lately, so.
If it's something like that, we'll definitely facilitate it. And I think every project is different in its own way. So, that communication is key with our office, along with the contractor or individual. But again, I think just keeping inspections open, and keeping a good number makes that availability. So, we're able to assist and meet in those deadlines or poor schedules, so.
On another issue of the, appreciate the update on the, on the, the numbers. I used to like it though, when we would have the addresses, and maybe the names and stuff, so we can keep track of what was coming into our communities, what was, you know, what areas were being built, and stuff like that. I don't know if it was before you, but we used to get it in, in blocks that way. And it'd be appreciated if we could get it.
Yeah, those Excel spreadsheets that have that, we can, you know, have the records show that.
It allows us to continue to keep ahead of what's happening, and what's going on in our community, large developments, small developments. When they call, we also have it right there in front of us to be able to look at.
Yeah, that's cool.
So, if you just add that in, it'd be appreciated. And I already complimented you guys once, so I got to compliment you again. I got it. So, I want to thank you for how quickly you guys work with some of the individuals when we have issues, and some of the contractors. I love it even more when you have an issue, then you talk to a contractor, and he ends up calling me back and saying that they scheduled a time and everything, and he sounds like he's apologetic, because he may have been wrong. I love those. Those are my favorites. So, thank you for, for the way you guys have reacted to those, when we get them to you. So, that's on both of you for that. I've called you both on them.
Awesome. Good to hear.
So, the online, the increase in online permit, does that save us significant time, or is it just?
Um, I think it's, makes us more available to the public for questions. However, time-wise, we still have to, those permits still have to be processed. And at first, especially with single-family residents, with going live with those, there was a lot of kinks to work out in regards to the cemental items we were getting, and kind of deciphering through those, and kind of the back and forth with the email. So, it's getting better, as we kind of, we all learn from that, within our office, from the people to submitting and so on. So, to make that as seamless as possible. But in regards to saving time, I think maybe eventually, we'll, we'll definitely see that. But right now, we're still just kind of implementing it and learning as we go, along with still needing that staff time to, to process it and, and route it and so on.
Yeah, that'll always be the...
Correct, yes.
Sometimes it'll speed up, you know, some of the transmission.
Yes. So, yeah. All right. I think that's it on that topic, huh?
Yeah, I think so. The next topic is filling posting our open position for program support, where Kathy's coming over here to join you, your win, our loss. We do have an internal candidate, so we'd like to, or we have opened it up internally. And we had to get that going quickly, given the position. And so, you know, normally, we'd be here in advance, but we just wanted to let you know that we did open that, and we're hoping to fill that.
And thanks for your assistance.
It's an absolutely essential position. I had no problem with that.
Yeah, because Josh and I are not going to do that.
Appreciate you guys checking in and handling it that manner again, because, but again, it was absolute necessity. There's no question.
Yeah, and I, I want to personally thank Josh, because, you know, I operated as a single manager for quite some time before I was able to get, well, Todd, right, you know, and then, and then Josh. But there's some things I just assume I'm going to do, and I couldn't, like, get on board. And Josh just did it. And next thing I know, it's like, oh yeah, I talked to all of you, talked to Travis, and made it happen. I was like, well, that's cool. I didn't even have to. So, yeah, I really appreciate it. Josh has been, I think we make a great team, and the department will just continue to improve on that. Because of our relationship, and I see how hardworking he is, that phone goes off constantly, all day, every day, mostly with the, you know, inspectors, I'm assuming, contractors out in the field. And I never receive those calls anymore like I used to, which is great. And on the SmartGov side, and going, you know, getting more and more permits online, and, and there are a lot of kinks. One of the things that we really learned from the lean process, that the secretary, is it State Auditor's Office, when, you know, that was, I want to say in twenty-one, twenty-two, that they came out. But we learned it's like constant process improvement. And I think more importantly, is that it is okay to come up with an idea, try it. And if it doesn't work, we don't think, oh, we just wasted time. You know, whereas I feel like we may have been that way in the past. We were afraid to do anything different, because you, A, we were so behind in permitting, that you didn't have time to, to try something new, and you just kept going with what you already know, you know, is barely working, but it's what you know. So, now we're, especially with Julie and the SmartGov team, which includes Josh and the, all the permit techs, they're, they're pretty amazing. They, they have these ideas, and they all collaborate, and they'll test something, and they're like, oops, that didn't work, and they'll undo it. And I think that's really cool. And I would, you know, recommend, you know, any and all departments to, to have that mindset. And then it makes more, makes everyone more comfortable with change, because we're just always doing change, even though we're doing the same thing, so.
Perfect.
Just wanted to, yeah.
Try and error.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. It's always good to find out what doesn't work.
It really is. And then pivot, and so just, you know, try it again.
Yeah.
Good.
So.
Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you. All, now that Travis is official, no longer interim, I have some things. So, I'll be, do I follow up with Chris Pinkston to get on your calendar? I have some priorities. I have a number one priority, and then some, several, so.
We'll wedge it in.
I'll do that. Okay.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Yes, of course.
Thank you.
Your turn.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thanks for the call on Friday, too. Sorry, I missed it.
Oh, yeah.
You guys are from the sheriff's office. You bring everybody.
Perfect.
He's got a full party session here, minus Mike. Sorry, we left him out of the party today.
I bet he's so sad.
I know. He really wishes he were here. He sends his best regards.
Before we start, do you have an extra sign that you could put out there?
No, we do not.
You do not?
Yeah. I, that was on my laundry list here, but no.
So, you heard us out there?
Yes, yeah. They're all in use right now. Yes. So, if you, if you tell us, "Thank you, firefighters," is more important than notifying on road projects, we can, we can rearrange.
I see that just...
No, I know.
Probably does.
We want to acknowledge and recognize.
What do we have going up there to the fire area currently? Do we have anything, it's a highway, so probably not us.
We warped through DOT to get the signs out there, Travis.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it sounds like the other one that's being deployed, I think it's the sheriff's department, right? It's here that facilities is utilizing. I thought they had a couple, but they might be like us. One was off getting repaired as well.
Okay, can you check on the sheriff's department one?
Yeah, they were just here and said that they didn't have it, and I'm not sure.
Nope. What is the keyword for it?
Yeah, I'll, I'll follow up with Kelly, because Kelly was going to be calling around and finding out.
And the city has one, I believe, but I think it's in use over here.
I think he was going to check with PUD too. So, I'll, I'll circle back with Kelly.
Yeah, we only need the one.
And we can rent them. I mean, I, I can certainly hook you up with a rental outfit that would potentially have them available, and get that information to you as well.
We should check the price.
Yeah, they're pretty reasonable, really. They're not bad.
Yeah, we need to be there for, one of Cushman might need to be there a couple weeks.
Cushman, yeah, they're saying they're going to be there for at least...
For at least fourteen days, at least. So, maybe we can just get permission, or?
I'd like, I'd like to see the cost first.
Yeah. Like I said, I think they're pretty, pretty reasonable.
Okay.
Yeah, fortunately, the ones that we needed for the main signage, notifying of the roads being closed and stuff, those were provided by Department of Transportation. So, those ones are, those ones are covered. So, we're good there.
Like usual, nobody's listening to the signs on...
Oh, of course.
Of course not, right. We have equal luck, I think, on our, our projects, unfortunately. Right. Oh, surprise. Now I, now I see it.
Desert floating down the river.
Well, first up, we, we only have one action agenda request for you this morning, commissioners, and that is a request to haul or advertise for proposals to your quotes, to haul biosolids from our treatment facilities. And Richard's here to tell you all about that.
Actually, I'm good with it. It's not necessary already. We have no choice.
No, it's really, I mean, we had, as I said, we had a contract with Tribeca Transport a few years ago, and they didn't want to renew. They were from like Longview area, and they were using giant tankers, and it just didn't fit their profile. They sold their company, and they just said, "We don't want to do this kind of work anymore." Went back out a couple more times, looking for somebody to have a contract with us, and they're just, there was really, nobody responded, even calling them and asking, and they just didn't respond. They did, they said, "Not, not interested. We, we already got your work." So, there's, there's more people in the area now that are performing these services. I'd like to go back out and see if we can get a better price.
Supportive.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, and this is a pretty significant portion of our budget. So, we're, we're going to see this accomplished. All right, awesome. So, discussion items, we have a couple. And welcome back, Kevin. He was, he was out for a week. He was struggling this morning. But I know he's bright and perky, and I need to go now.
He's like, oh, it's Monday, okay. Let's keep going.
That's all right. First, it's not on here, but I think Health Department briefed this morning about their SWIPA grant. And I know that Kevin and Richard and Michelle have been working with ecology for our grant also. So, we'll be bringing that, we'll be taking the final review, and bringing that back for briefing and action as well, commissioners. So, that's coming. Second up, though, we have the solid waste recycling and outer station contract that we currently have with Mason County Garbage, and that expires in April.
April, twenty twenty-six.
Yes. So, a little less than a year. And we have taken a look at some options. One of them being, does it make sense to do this in-house? Does it make sense to extend our existing contract? Does it make sense to go out? And so, if the, if the, if the answer from commission is, let's go out and advertise, you remember the last process, we wanted to have plenty of lead time to do that. In this case, we are not recommending that we go out. But also wanted to share the analysis that Kevin and Richard did, and taking a look at what would it cost us to keep this work in-house. Bottom line up front, we're not recommending that either. But they are more than happy to walk through the analysis and share some details about why. And then, of course, we just want to answer any questions you may have, and see if you've got some direction, one way or the other, about extend, don't extend, go out, bring back some more information. All right, Kevin and Richard.
I'll go first.
Uh, you go.
Okay. So, Mason County, and Mason County Garbage, we just, we got the recycling and outer station box hall. Like she said, it expires in twenty twenty-six of April. The annual price increase calculation changed from ninety percent of the June to June CPIU Olympia Washington area to one hundred percent of the January to January CPIU. Proposing the contract renewal term of ten years, with an option for an automatic five-year renewal period. An update proposal rate schedule, I think you guys got a whole, a copy of it. Yeah, so we can take a look at that. And all other terms and conditions are expected to remain unchanged.
So, just clarify for myself, you're saying that the request, what they're looking to do is go from ninety percent of the CPI to the one hundred percent?
Correct.
So, that was their increase. Would they go lower? Okay. With you, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, good. I had to ask the same question. Do you guys got any questions on the rates, or you want to?
I can tell you about the internal rate. Kevin did a lot of background work with Stephanie and Pete to figure out, what, what kind of mileage do we get with our drop-off truck, you know, our roll-off truck, and how many hours, and what's the distance, how much fuel's going to be, you know, used up? Kevin did a lot of background work with Stephanie and Pete to figure out what, what kind of mileage do we get with our drop-off truck, you know, our roll-off truck and how many hours and what's the distance? How much fuel is gonna be, you know, used up? We didn't include things like stuff we're ever gonna buy anyway, like insurance and all these other items, but it was a fully loaded rate we looked at. And if you look at what they're proposing compared to what they currently have, they're dropping their prices mostly across the board. And it compares really, really closely to what we came up with if, if we internalized it. And the only thing they actually lowered, gave, would come up lower on is, is the union hall, but it's only like, by like ninety-seven cents.
Yeah, not much at all.
Um, they said, "We do have two roll-off trucks," and so we're like, "Well, maybe we utilize those." One of the big ones you see on there that aren't on, that isn't on this with the rates is the Shelton Hall for drop boxes. That went up like a hundred and seventy percent. We, we haven't utilized that. We don't utilize it. They have to put something in there and it's a big hassle for them, so that's, they're just throwing that in there like, "If you make us do it, yeah, we'll charge it really." Like it was a lawn hall.
And why would we? I mean, maybe a little bit of explanation about that. So that would be if both of our.
Yeah, both of our trucks were down.
Trucks were down and for some reason we needed to move containers around the facility.
Good to have that in that contract.
Absolutely.
It is.
Yes.
But we don't utilize them.
We, yeah, we just haven't put it to work.
Yeah.
But it's good to have it just in case.
Yes.
Yeah, because I, I've used it previous years when our older roll-off was down. We'd use them to get those boxes locked up for us.
And, and which, which would you guys like to see?
I'd like to just extend this for a ten-year contract. It seems really good, good deal for us.
With a five-year option.
Yeah, and even if, even if they're broken, we still have the ability to take care of ourselves at a competitive rate. Um, I, that's, to me, that'd be the best thing to do is.
Will this come into conflict if we decide to do, if we ever decide, and I know we would, but we've been hit up over a few times over it, uh, decide to go, uh, private and have our utilities and stuff run by somebody else, by like Republic was the last one that wanted to take over everything and stuff.
Right, right.
What would that look like if we had contracts that weren't standing out that far?
I think we'd be obligated to this contract for the ten-year deal.
Yeah. I think Republic's being picky.
They're on strike right now.
And I was just using that as an example, not, there's nothing before us right now, but it still could come up again sometime to bind ourselves completely. Uh, and I'm not speaking for the mission of asking, "What about five of five?"
I'm not against that. This is, this, their proposal was for a ten-year term.
Yeah.
Yeah, five doesn't, doesn't, doesn't break my heart.
Five with a five.
Five with a five takes ten.
Yep. Okay, well, yeah. I'll take your, uh, your recommendation.
What do you think, Kevin? Five of five, y'all?
Do ten and five and we'll have to come back to it.
You have to come back to us after vacation.
I'm with whatever you guys would like to do, so.
I think it gives us most flexibility, recognizing, knowing what's gonna happen on that, uh, especially right now in that industry.
Mm-hmm.
How long did we have?
Thirty.
Thirty.
Yeah.
Yeah. And in terms of just workability with, um, Mason County Garbage, but how Kevin knows, on a daily basis, he's working with them, they're in constant communication, they've been very, very responsive, easy to work with, reports submitted timely, all those good things, so they've been a good contractor.
Got us our vouchers when we needed them?
Yeah.
Absolutely, yeah.
That's important one to be because it's really helped a lot of our people.
Yeah. Um, equipment-wise, in good shape, that's the other thing. Richard and Kevin and Stephanie and her team were looking at apples and apples on the labor side, but if for whatever reason we were to take this over, I mean, they have equipment invested in this, so if we are not contracting with Mason County Garbage, somebody else has to bring a lot of containers to me. So that's a big upfront capital, so either you have them on hand or you don't.
Yeah, and those big ones are fifteen thousand a piece.
There's a third option, just thinking it through, uh, five with the ability to do uh, two at five each. So that still locks it up for fifteen to, to, without having to go out to contract.
Right.
Yeah, okay. I mean, if they're performing just like they are right now, that's just great.
But it just gives us our protection if we need it, which I don't think we will, but what do you think of that?
It'd be a total of fifteen.
Yeah, so it'd be five with the ability to bring up twice at five each.
I like that. Just depends on how they feel about it.
Right.
Yep, right.
Yeah. So we'll see.
Ask, we can, we can ask.
But I have been happy with what they've been doing, how they've treated us, just wanted to get that out there.
Yeah, they're awesome. And it's really nice having them on the, the sweat.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yes.
They're a benefit, that's for sure. And kinda no trash, I don't know.
Time to make you on the vouchers.
Yes, they do.
Ask if they'll do a few more. Please.
You can do it.
Yeah, ask them if they'll do a few more.
Okay. I'll get, I'll get my, uh, all my totals added up and see how much we, we still have available.
Yeah, that's.
Well, this time you guys got much higher use than you did the last time.
Yeah, yeah, this year we're, we're on track, we use them all, so.
Yeah, that's crazy good.
That's very.
And I, I can't remember, we normally don't even get two hundred tons.
No, and we're over.
We're well past.
I think we're two, two thirty-six or forty-six right now.
Really?
So good.
Yeah.
But I think we have like five sixty is our limit right now.
Yeah, so we're about half, a little more, yep. So that's a good place to be, halfway through the year, a little more than half. Okay, um, next up, water and sewer utility rates, a long awaited. So we've been talking and talking and last time we met commissioners, um, Commissioner Trask asked for, what's, what would a five-year game plan look like? What do you recommending if we were to do rate increases? Um, and so this is what Stephanie put together and some of it matches up with previous discussions and, and comments for preference from commissioners and of course, some of it does not, so I just want to acknowledge that right up front.
The only problem with that is I sure would have liked to have seen what my note, like I got paper with it and maybe, you know, get that to me because I didn't bring that note with me because I had written each part down to see the difference.
Oh, okay. Gotcha.
So much of previous recommendations.
Yeah, when I, you guys wrote down everything I had, that's why I didn't worry about it.
Okay.
So if you don't mind, I'd like to see what that looks like.
Yep.
Because we don't have to relitigate it by our own brain.
Okay, all right. I think, uh, for the sewer, we're on par or on track with what all three commissioners were looking for. So one of the things that, um, we, we basically talked about ten percent. Um, and then also over the course of time, I think Commissioner Netherton, well, maybe all three of you had talked about getting closer to a similar rate for our sewer systems. And so you can see that in Stephanie's tables here, that while there is some slight difference and as there should be, because there are different utilities with different customer base, different needs, all those good things, that we are approaching, um, a similar rate. So the recommendation also includes, so a kind of a jump for this first year and more extreme on our water utilities than our sewer utilities. And then thereafter, following the CPIU with a minimum of three percent and a not-to-exceed of five. And I believe that is, I was gonna say, I believe that's similar also to other rate structures that the board has adopted, so hopefully there's some financial consistency for you as well.
And for the, for providing the services.
Absolutely, that you've got some predictability.
Right.
Yep. So that's it and just a really high-level overview. Um, we've, a, a lot of the recommendations have to do, in terms of this initial jump and the three to five, have to do with the fact that we're playing catch-up in some regards for some of these utilities, unfortunately, but we are. And then the others, that we have pretty significant capital expenses that we know are coming down the pike or right now in front of us today. And so we have to have some funding available for that at a minimum to make either a loan repayment or a, um, a grant match. So that's essential. We know that for these bigger ticket items, we have to be applying for grants and loans, but we've gotta have the match and we've got to be able to make that loan.
Right.
So that's kind of the other basic principle behind the rate recommendations.
Sorry. All right. Kinsey caught my eye.
Kinsey, what are you doing back there? Okay. Uh, with that, any particular questions?
I guess my goal was to look out five years and that way it's easier, it's like, it's like doing the contracts, right? You don't have to come back every year to say, "Commissioners."
Right.
That was Diane.
That was Diane. Actually, I started enforcing it.
Yeah. Commissioners.
We would all stop, every one of us. Tim Shelby stopped cold in his tracks when she did it too.
Yeah. For good reason.
Yeah.
Yeah, but this was, this is also, thank you guys for, for doing this.
Share that at the workshop, please.
Absolutely.
Actually, if you just added it onto the, the central, we'd be for sure.
Any questions, commissioners?
Yeah, this is, this is great. I really appreciate, I would like to sit down again and, and work through it like we did that last time, if Travis wants to sit in on that too.
Of course.
Of course. I thought you might.
Can't wait. Nothing better, right?
Yeah, right? Doesn't like to talk about sewer and trash.
Yes.
Well, I did very much enjoy having you two come down and spend some time and talk through the, all of the details of it for each one of those. It was very helpful and instructive, so thank you for that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All righty, well, we'll, um, in the meantime, hopefully we can get it wrapped up before budget submittals, but otherwise we'll be taking a conservative.
I think we're, I think we're getting close.
Okay, perfect. I know Steph, he's like, "Budget, you know, what am I doing?"
She's excited about it.
Exactly.
Which I know Stephanie gets, you know, I pay attention to Bible English a lot and I definitely know that when I speak and I say that, you understand me. I know, I can see how, yeah, yeah, you're putting it all into place. I just wanted to tell you, I do see.
I'm just trying to get that Rubik's right.
Yep. I definitely feel like I'm being heard and understood, so thank you for that.
That is a fact. Okay, well, good enough. The only other thing I have is, um, a quick update on the Skokomish Valley Road Project, so the reconnection, if you will. We recently met with the tribe, with, um, DOT local programs and ourselves to talk about the status of the project. It's been at about a hundred percent design for some time and we've been working through the obligation requirements through DOT and that's been really time-consuming. So bottom line, we have a recent construction cost estimate of about five point four million and funding in hand is about a half million short from the looks of things and then also somewhat in jeopardy because of how long and where we are in the process. So we've been working with local programs and, um, Evan and team have been working with RCO about, hey, we're still committed, we're still working, hang on, hang in there a little bit. And then also Evan had made a, an application to the Conservation Commission for four million dollars, but has not heard on that front either.
So you're saying we're short? We are short, they are short?
Well, we're all somewhat bringing money to the project. It's a Mason Conservation District lead and they've been great and always have been about securing funds, but they, I'm just alerting you in the event that someone comes knocking on commission door and says, "Hey, can we chip in an extra whatever?"
Well, that happens all the time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Can I give you half a million dollars?
Yeah, so just, just keeping you posted about where the project stands and, and what we're seeing.
So you said they're only half a million shy. How is that, uh, if they're still going out for the four hundred K?
Four million.
I mean, for the, sorry. If they're going out for the four million, how are we only half a million shy?
Because that would supplant or take care of, in the event some of these other funds don't come through or the, the existing grants aren't renewed.
Okay, so we have assumptions on grants at, at that's what you're saying.
Correct, yes, yes.
Yep.
Yep, it's, it's like a backup plan, basically, yeah.
What would you like to see us do?
Um, at this point, just, it's informational, just keep, be aware of where we're at.
Does Arnie, could you, could you help?
Yeah, there may be some talking with RCO and/or Western Federal Lands if it looks like we're really at risk at losing those funds and getting them.
We don't want to do that again.
Right, re-appropriated, so there's that. But right now, I think we're, we're all right.
Also, keep in mind a meeting out there so we could talk with those folks and they could have a.
Yes.
A say, at least even if nothing happens, they just have somebody to talk to would be a great help.
Yep. Yeah, and then.
Either we wanted to go and we were.
The other piece is that for the project to move forward and to meld to federal grant fund pots, if you will, and we will need to execute an agreement with the Skokomish Tribe so that we can accept funds that they had received from the Navy. And the purpose for that is to make sure that we're all meeting federal requirements and guidelines for processing the project. So that's, that's in the works as well. More coming. Okay? Yeah, fun. Complicated. I, um, hats off to Cobree who's really been taking the lead on making sure that federal processes are met and then as a liaison with Mason Conservation District so that they understand what's necessary and their consultants getting the proper information submitted. So it's, it's, it's a lot of work, lots of detail, and she's doing a fantastic job. Oh, let's see, the only other thing, I'm gonna be out of the office starting Wednesday for a little wedding and vacation, be out the following week, trying to find halibut and fund fish up in Alaska.
Oh, say, how you gonna get mule out of, out of hell?
No mules. This is a non-mule expedition, so, um, Mike will be the, the taking over in charge overall, but always if you've got solid waste and water sewer things, feel free to reach out to Richard and Kevin.
Before you go, make sure you talk to Dave and, uh, Dave met up there with Bill and stuff and he did a.
I have spoken.
An incredible job again.
Yeah.
He just does, he works really good with, uh, especially contentious things and of course, some of that's my job is to get in the middle of when it starts to, but then he comes in afterwards and he starts massaging and putting it together and it was a great meeting when it was done.
Yeah, so I, my understanding, he has some follow-up.
He does.
Um, to make sure that if there are things that we can, um, do that follow the manual and uniform traffic control devices, the MUTCD.
Or can't do.
That we're, exactly, yep. So he's, I know he's working on that and thank you for coming out to, to me. Last item, the road closure in August for, um, Bear Creek to Wado, so we've got some culverts to replace up there and there's no easy way to get around or do a detour, like a quick level of detour while we have the culverts out there, large pipes. So we are doing a road closure and part of the, I think you have a map or had a map included in here, part of the, the detour, um, will be on Belfair, or excuse me, where are we going? Yeah, Belfair to Huya and we've got some chip seal occurring, so part of the, the detour route that was gravel will be chip sealed, so hopefully it'll be a, a better detour route for our, our citizens and we'll, we'll work hard and fast as we can.
How big is that and how, and how much? It's great that we're doing, I'm just wondering, how big of a stretch are we chipping off the gravel there?
Oh. Oh, Mike could have it off the top of his head from mile post to mile post, but it's a good stretch, I, sorry.
What?
Couldn't, I think longer than that. Yeah, we'd already chip sealed last year, if you remember, and so this is the remainder. We've done some widening, I think Commissioner Trask, you'd been out to take a look at the work for the widening, and yep, now it's getting that all chip sealed.
Is that where we took you?
No, well, maybe you and, I wasn't on that wild and wondrous road trip, but this was the previous year that we were out there.
Oh.
Yep, yeah, around this time of year, maybe a little bit sooner, the roadies were blooming up there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Important things like that.
The, the other things we appreciate.
Yes, I can get you the, the exact mileage, Commissioner.
That's wonderful, though, that's a.
Yeah, no, there's really awesome things happening up on the, the Tahuya Peninsula, and you should do a road truer with us.
I drive all the time, I was just.
I'm sure, you probably see it, it's like the back.
It's your backyard.
But I did all of it up there. I had a, waiting for it, something else somewhere, my wife wanted to be here, and it took me half an hour to get all the way back around. But no, uh, uh, thank you to our past tip cap, and Mike, when they went ahead and brought that forward to start catching some of these, it's, really has a good impact, I think it does.
Yes, yeah, pretty, pretty exciting to see.
We were many, many years without touching them.
Oh, yeah.
You know, we just left them in the, the gravel roads, but we've been starting to piece them up.
Well, and for good reason. The red fund was kind of wiped out there for a while, so luckily, we've got some, some money to do that now.
We were just looking at your end fund balance, and you do.
Yeah, well, we also have lots of match and projects that basically have no other funding source other than road funds, so we have some pretty big liabilities out there, and that balance will start tapping down.
Speaking of that, your equipment, rental revolving fund is getting pretty big too.
Yeah, and Stephanie's taken a look at that, and recommended adjustments as well, so.
Well, also, some new equipment, as, as is your fund, actually, you're at over, what, four million in your, in your.
They have some capital projects coming up.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask, for your Mace County landfill.
Yes. I think we've got up to a million next year.
Yeah, actually, I was wrong, you got five million four hundred forty-nine.
But some of the.
Last year was.
Some of the improvements are.
Yeah.
Absolutely necessary.
If you don't mind, fill me a number later on, show me what we have that we've allocated out of that, would be appreciated. In terms of the future, but.
Maybe bring that for briefing.
There's nothing wrong with giving the people back some of the money in the way of services or equipment and stuff like that at some point.
Well, and you'll, I'm not sure when Marissa's briefing, but the annual CIP updates are coming soon, and so you can see what the, the capital plan is for, for solid waste, all of the utilities.
Can you use any of those funds for scales?
Yes.
One of them, oh, from Belfair. No comment. Not at the time.
Scales, where, where, scales and a, yeah.
Location, no, I got you, I, I knew with my, I was just putting it together, then there's also.
Scales are a good thing.
Well, it put us in competition with our neighbor, or not.
Yeah.
With Olympic.
Anything else for public works?
Thank you guys.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, go ahead.
Thank you.
Have a lovely rest of the week.
Well, thanks, you too.
You're going on vacation.
Yes.
So, next week.
For the halibut.
Yeah, just for the halibut.
So we have Commissioner's discussion, anything we need to talk about or calendar updates?
I think it covered Mike during the.
Yeah.
Uh, the only thing, I received a phone call from somebody who's still pursuing animal control, where we're at there, just looking for answers.
It's great, that was the one thing that was on my list, was to, quick question about JAS.
I can tell you where I'm at, I, I'm waiting, because I don't, didn't want to get into a thing until we're all ready to go on something like that, and you still had some questions and looking at the budget, so I've just kind of waited, so when you want to have that discussion, we can, and see what there is, or not.
I'd like to make sure that we can do it, it'd be nice to have numbers, so that we can take a look at the budget and.
The numbers from everything else, or the numbers from that?
From that.
Okay, so we had that, I'll, I'll ask for updated.
Yeah, because I think it was just a proposal before, but it didn't include everything that we were looking for.
Yeah, they came back with the rest of it, so I'll just have them, I'll reach out to them and ask for them to put it forward, and tell them we'd like to look at and have that discussion again.
Okay.
Yeah, perfect. Thanks for bringing that up, because I did get an inquiry from the paper the other day about where we are at in that process, and I told them we were still having the discussions, and we'd had the, the A, B, and C options that we had got from JAS, and that we were still in the process of evaluating that, so I just wanted to bring that back.
For me, it's more of a, a budget issue than, than anything, I just want to make sure that we can.
It's a legitimate concern. Everything we do.
If we don't, I don't, I, yeah, if we get it and then we have to cut it, what type of a service? What are we, what are we showing to our people?
And I'm with you, just so you know, for me, I, when it comes to government, I said this before, I always think that we have to find a way to do the services people can't do for themselves, and then cut out the services maybe that we don't. I'd say this is one of those ones that they can't do for themselves, that I think we need to find a way, that that's just, regardless of who we do it with, I just meant in general, just my two cents. So we'll, I'll, I'll ask for that, and unless you want to.
Yeah, sure, I don't have any of your contact information or anything, I can get it from you if you.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Yeah, we do either way, but we should get an updated one now, and they actually have the numbers, and it'd be nice if we actually saw what the, the contract actually looks like. And I wanted to hold off, because.
That would be nice.
Well, they wanted to talk to the sheriff, but what's interesting enough is the person that's sitting in his chair right now over there may be able to answer those questions, because they probably would have answered the questions when he was there, so funny how that, that works.
Well, as I do recall, we had talked about the three different options, they kind of had the Cadillac, the Yugo, and then the family car version, and I think we all kind of agreed on the, the middle, the middle option that they provided with one extra caveat for providing some sort of weekend or emergency service, I don't remember the exact details on that.
And they just wanted to talk to the Sheriff's Department to find out exactly what that looks like, how it would look like, but also just how the interaction would be, to make sure that the Sheriff's Department wants to interact. Because if they don't, that would make everybody's life heck, but our Sheriff's Department's been very open about wanting to work and get it done, so.
So when I circle back, I guess I'll ask him if they have made that contact with the Sheriff's Office?
They have not.
Okay, they have not, okay, well, then I'll ask them to do that.
Mark was gonna set all that up, and then he didn't, it didn't happen.
Well, I will ask them to follow up on that, and then have them add that to that middle option, or do you want it added to all three options?
Uh, neither, just right now, I'd like, I'd just have them connect, so that they do away with any of their concerns, and then put together, show us the actual proposal.
Okay.
The actual one, you know, what it would look like, so we're talking not just semantics or, or a concept, but this is what it looks like, and it makes it a lot easier for us to make decisions when it's actually a real contract.
Perfect, we can do that.
I don't think I have any calendar differences or anything like that.
I don't think I do either.
Just a few more meetings added in there?
Always. Meetings are like Jell-O, Commissioner, there's always room for one more.
Not always.
It seems like that, that's my.
I don't know.
Not always. All right?
Yeah.
Anything else for us?
Nope, that's me.
One o'clock, Madam Chair, I.
One o'clock, we, we will be back here.
Yep, yep. Move for German. Okay, I'd say.
Okay, one o'clock.